Done. I would like to invite everybody to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, this evening we have no public hearings on this agenda. We do have a public meeting with two cases. We're going to open with case PB 20-2007-36, South Westgate Road, request for a full release of covenant. Is there anybody, please, would you step up to the table, introduce yourself, and to the table would be great.
Oh, the table?
Yep.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mark Zipple. I'm the developer. Hi.
I'm Mark. So...
I've requested the, I put in a request for covenant, for the release of the covenant. There was some feedback from the town's current engineer
Right.
of record, and I sent a subsequent response to the board
Right.
for the issues that I felt that were pertinent and that the board would be concerned about, and laying everything out. And I'm just hoping to get board's feedback, enclosure on the, on the request.
Great, thank you. Ms. Flynn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Steve Rhodes from VHB Engineering provided a report, and he had raised three issues, and, but also felt that it was appropriate to recommend a full release. In terms of the South Westgate Road, our attorney, Town Council, had also deliberated that this was a private matter between the developer and the Butters, so it was really of no concern for the planning board. The second matter was the water main and utility. Provided that the applicant just come back to demonstrate the two hydrant, hydrant, the two hydrant plan. That was okayed by the fire department as the water superintendent. And the third, relative to the drainage and the stormwater infrastructure, the applicant did reply that they would maintain all stormwater infrastructure, and so I think with that information, it's recommended that the, a full release of the lot is recommended with the condition that the applicant come back relative to the hydrant and just to, with a maintenance plan for the stormwater infrastructure. Or just an update for the board at that time, but otherwise, the engineer felt that it was recommended for a full release of the lot.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No.
Since we don't have a public hearing, we don't have to close the hearing. Do I hear a motion to move ahead? Or wait a minute, is there any comment from the public at large? I didn't think so. Be happy to take a motion.
Make a motion to approve covenant for PB 2007-36, South Westgate Road, request for full release of covenant with, what were the two?
Condition for the hydrant, hydrant and, and the maintenance.
A hydrant plan and a maintenance plan.
I think we can remove the hydrant plan. I supplied the board
You did, okay.
the two emails.
Yes.
Yes, both from the fire chief and from the water department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like to make a, amend that.
We'll amend that then, right?
Like to make a motion to approve full request of covenant, PB 2007-36, South Westgate Road, with the condition of a maintenance plan.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, board. Appreciate it.
The next item is an A and R. Case PB 2024-07, Karen Healy, PLS of the BSC Group, representing Dan Mento, has applied for, applied for an approval not required to create four lots from a one lot at zero Queen Anne Road, the intersection of Orleans Road, assessors map 74, parcel S3 in the RR zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Karen Healy. I'm a land surveyor at the BSC Group, representing the Mento brothers, who are the purchasers of this property. We are looking to create four A and R lots for this particular parcel. Each lot has 150-foot minimum frontage, each lot has at least 40,000 square feet of upland, and each lot meets the minimum shape factor that is required by the town of Harwich. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Ms. Flynn?
Again, Steve Rhodes, the town's contracted engineer from VHB, did submit a memorandum and found that all conditions regarding the property were appropriate for an A and R.
And as an A and R, our vote is irrelevant? So, do we have any questions from the board? Do we want to go ahead and make our irrelevant vote official? Yeah, that'd be great. Unless Mary would prefer to do it remotely.
Make a motion to approve. And approval not required to create four lots from one lot at zero Queen Anne Road, the intersection with Orleans Road, assessors map 74, parcel S3 in the RR zoning district for case PB 2024-07.
Any further comments? We have a mo, oh, we need a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. Is it appropriate to wait for a signature, or is that something that I should?
Uh, is, do we have the form, the, the release forms? Or is this the?
The Mylar.
Yeah, the Mylar, but that has to be submitted
To the town clerk.
To the town clerk, right? I want to make sure that we're doing that right.
And if it hasn't, then I can have them, I can take it down to the town clerk.
Okay.
If needed.
So we'll sign both copies then, right? Say it's 23?
Yes.
23?
Yeah.
24? Very good. So I believe, you take the paper and the Mylar goes to the county, right, or to the town?
I think we keep one that we have to bring down to the town clerk, I believe.
Right. I don't know which one the archival is, so I will let that be.
I'll sort that out, and I'll call the applicant.
Okay. So you, the Mylar's all, you're all signed off, okay?
Thank you.
The physical thing will spread this way in the next 24 hours, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Healy. So that leaves, we have on the agenda for this evening, draft minutes for the last meeting, which was on the 9th. Unfortunately, that was a very lengthy meeting, as we all recall, and it was a nine-page, single-spaced document, which had just been finished up a couple hours before the, our meeting convening this evening. So, we're going to defer the meeting, the minutes to be approved for the next meeting, which is February, what was the date on the next meeting? The 2nd or something? Or no, the, the 6th, right?
6th, yes, 6th.
Just wanted to make sure if it's the 6th or the, it's not the?
5th is the, 5th is Monday.
Is Monday, and today's, yeah, so it's got to be the 6th. So, that'll be on February 6th. We also have now a, for new business, a approval for a new street name for Veterans Memorial Drive. So, Robin, showtime. You want to come up to the table? How you been?
Good, how about yourself?
Great, thanks.
So, in Evergreen Cemetery, which we've just recently mapped, and we have a new website if anyone wants to Google it and look at it, it's evergreenhowich.org. We are putting down, so that people can, if they came to visit in the cemetery in the summertime, most people call me because they want to locate somebody who's buried. So, I spend a lot of my day doing that. So these, the new websites help navigate people with GPS, how to get to a grave site. So, all of Evergreen, P-SAV running through the entire cemetery, all the way through to, out to the, it's 25 acres. So, the new section, which is where the Veterans Memorial Circle is, and where our Walk of Remembrance is, is going to be, we wanted to name Veterans Memorial Drive. So that's what I'm here for you, before you today. And once you guys okay it, then I can register it with Google, so that, that way, if somebody's, if we tell them that the grave space is on Veterans Memorial Drive, it'll be able to, to Google it and be able to get to the grave space.
Very good. Any questions, please?
I think this is fabulous. I was just curious on grammatically, do we, is it veterans, it's possessive right now? Should it be possessive? Should it be?
Possessive plural.
Or?
Plural possessive.
Right, that's what I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
You tell me, I don't care.
Apostrophe after the S?
Yeah, I think S apostrophe.
Okay.
Because it's more than one.
Okay.
Yep. Are you, are you all, has everybody been, had a chance to see it?
Yeah.
If you haven't, it's worth going up there. It's very impressive. Hats off to Robin. The unveiling was, what, November 11th?
Yeah.
And you had a couple hundred people from the town. All the service flags were raised in order of their chartering, I guess, right?
Yeah.
And it was just spectacular, and there's more to be going on up there, which is even more exciting, so.
Yeah, so this, hopefully this year, I'm doing all our Revolutionary War and Civil War veterans, and we'll be having a huge dedication there. That will probably have about 500 people when we, when we have that unveiling. We have over 284 Revolutionary War veterans from the town. So we have people that are descendants from all over the state that are going to be attending that.
Excellent.
So that's going to be pretty big. So we want to make sure it's all in good shape for.
Was there anything from the, the town that we need to take into account other than the grammatical thing of plural possessive?
No, not at this time. All of the other town boards were supportive in terms of police, fire, EMS, the assessors. So they, they had no comments or concerns relative to the name change, and thought it was a great idea.
Okay. Well, I don't know if there's anything more to discuss. Harry, anything from you?
No.
I would just encourage you, if you haven't seen it, to go up, make a drive on a sunny day, and it's pretty moving.
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so the Walk of Remembrance will start with the founding of the town, and it'll walk through, the cemetery meander through. It'll be a stamped concrete pathway. It'll be pretty nice.
Are the, are the graves ordered in terms of what, where the people served, or the years that they died? Or is it random?
The, the pillars that are going to be erected, is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about the grave sites. The grave sites themselves. Are there groups of, based on the?
No, it's just when the, when the, no.
It's what's available, right?
So right now, in the cemetery now, it's whatever people want to buy.
And didn't the cemetery kind of grow backwards from the road, so it kind of like in chunks? So it's like, there is like a rough chronology, but nothing?
Yeah. And we have a lot of people that are buried in that cemetery that are from Chatham.
Get them out of there.
Because that, that was the closest cemetery to any of the people who lived in that part of Chatham.
Right.
Was that cemetery. So we have.
Right, imagine having to deal with that zip code for eternity, oh my god. Well, I would entertain them.
That's true. Yeah, that's a bonus.
I'd be willing to take an, or entertain a motion to approve the new street name for Veterans Plural Possessive Memorial Drive.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you, Robin. So we now move on to the new address, street number for 41 Round Cove.
Again, it was just a, a changing of the numbering
Right.
that came from the property owner, and when we reached out to the assessors, police, fire, EMS, they didn't have any issues with the change of the numbering.
Right.
Which end of Round Cove is the, but it's going to be close to one of the ends. Which end is it?
That's a good question. There's no map on this.
I'm just being lazy. I thought someone, I could look it up. I thought someone might know.
Yeah, I didn't see a map on this one, so I kind of assumed that it was more kind of.
That is closer towards...
28 or 39?
Uh, it's closer to Hox Nest.
Hox Nest is right across from Round Cove, so on the west side of 137.
Yeah.
So number four would be?
Forty, 41.
Or 41, sorry.
Be down here.
Okay, so it's
It's in there.
28th side, or maybe it isn't all the way, I just assumed it was such a low number, it would be near the end.
It is near the end, like.
Closer to 137?
Yeah, if you go down Spruce, that's, there's that random pathway, yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah.
Of course, my thing is... So, let's just see here, oh yeah, I got it. So what is the, take care, that's kind of a pro forma request? This is the first one I've seen of these. Simply permit it and?
It's, it's a, just a recommendation
Right.
to vote it, to vote the change.
Okay. Be happy to take a motion?
Make a motion to, like, were to recommend? Should I say?
Or approve the new?
To approve the request
Okay.
to change the number to 41.
Okay. Like to make a motion to approve a new street address, new address slash street number for 41 Round Cove Road.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments, questions, discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, that takes us to the last item on our new business. Here is, has to do with a, the discussion of the Housing Production Plan, Housing Needs Assessment that Karen Sonnenberg has prepared for us.
Yes.
And is she online?
She's going to be online, and I did tell her, I did give 25 minutes, so
Okay.
if it's all right, I can also give her a call to let her know that we're ready.
Sure, why don't you ping her or TM her, whatever you want.
Great. The only other thing, if I could, just as a reminder, on February 7th, Town Council is providing the training for both planning boards and zoning boards of appeal
Right.
for roles and responsibilities.
Right.
And that's going to be in this room at 4 o'clock, and from 4 to 6.
Got it.
And just let me, please feel free to let me know if you plan on attending. That would be great.
Okay, I'll be there for that.
All right, fantastic. If you'll excuse me for one moment.
Yep, please. And we'll keep the meeting open, no sense of going into recess and having to open it up when we don't know exactly. Do we have any other items that are coming up on the horizon that we know about that? Any further discussion about, or any further contacts with people that might be potential board members?
I've reached out to a couple Harwich residents in my school, and they're taking it under advisement.
Okay. I had a discussion late in the summer about, with former State Senator Paul Doan, who I think has now subsequently gone on to the Historical District, Historical Commission, his, whatever it's called, Historic District Historical Commission, and I think that's where he's ended up. So, he apparently has a planning degree, and it would have been nice to have somebody with, you know, some kind of a perspective on it, even though I suspect that, you know, the game's changed a bit since he had that, took that degree. But, anyway. But he's, you know, an old timer and knows all the machinery in place.
I think it's good to have legal and also some planning.
Right, right.
Experience, obviously. Yeah, that'd be good.
He'd be good, but, so, anyway, I don't know of anybody else that's kind of stepped forward. And I know that the Select Board's been busier than a one-armed paper hanger, so we'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
My quick thing with Mary was that she was going to be running late, but that she'd make it. Can't remember, oh yeah. She was going to be 10 to 15 minutes late, so it's up to her whether she's going to, what the traffic's going to be. But I thought she had, oh, that's right, her, her thing is in Yarmouth, right, so.
Yeah.
Is there traffic between here and Yarmouth at this time of day?
Yeah.
Route 28, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, may I borrow your pen? I just realized.
Sorry about that. Looks like somebody's just signed on, or sounds like it. Familiar beep?
Do we have paper on this item, or no?
Big one.
The item that we're about to have, do we have any paper on it?
I don't think so.
I don't have anything in my pack.
Yeah, no, it's just a presentation. This is, I think it's just a presentation of the assessment.
Make sure I didn't miss it.
Give me one more moment. Sorry, she's having some technical issues.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So did we have somebody try and log on there, Caleb?
Yeah, thanks.
I hope you all are following my lead and making your note to Craig as illegible as possible.
I have no choice. A handicap.
My penmanship has gone down precipitously.
At all, and that's why I don't even have a pen.
Yeah, and I have a, like, a good friend who, and I, you know, I used to love. That's way too legible. Way too legible. Well, just lucky, I guess.
Hey!
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know. It kept going?
This is great.
Thought you had already had it.
Hello and goodbye. Oh, here we go.
Karen, we have your presentation loaded up. Can you see this?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. I just wanted to, this is Karen Sonnenberg. She is the lead consultant for the housing production, for Harwich's Housing Production Plan.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
It's good to see you. I was nervous for a while. I'm hearing a little bit of an echo, so hopefully that'll go away. Anyway, I'm going to go through this presentation, which provides kind of the highlights of the, this first major part of the Housing Production Plan, the Housing Needs Assessment, which is a pretty detailed and comprehensive document. I'm going to try to just go through the key takeaways, and then go into a kind of a, a discussion of the housing strategies related to zoning that we included in the last Housing Production Plan that was in 2016. This plan is really an updated plans that we prepared in 2010 and 2016. But a lot has changed since 2016, so this is some interesting trends since then. Why don't we go to the next slide? So basically, one, why we're doing this. First, to support the local comprehensive plan, housing is a big section of that, and the Housing Trust Action or Strategic Plan. Also to obtain updated information on demographic, economic, and housing characteristics and trends. Better understand the current housing market dynamic. We have information pre-COVID, during COVID, and after COVID, and there have been significant impacts and, from the pandemic. Also, once we have kind of a sense of the housing needs, we identify strategies to address those needs as well as production goals. And so this, this plan, it has a term of five years, so it really creates a roadmap, a roadmap of proactive actions the town should consider over the next five years, prioritizing them and going through the regular regulatory channels to get approvals. And lastly, to gain access to Housing Production Plan Safe Harbor provisions whilst driving towards the safe 10% affordability goal. And I'll talk about the Safe Harbor provisions in the next slide, which is, you know, what are Housing Production Plans? Now you folks, we've already done two in the past, but in general, if the state has pretty prescriptive requirements on what's to be included in these plans, and I mentioned they're five-year plans, and if the plan is submitted by the town, approved by the state, and then the town actually produces one-half of 1% of its year-round housing stock, that's the equivalent of 33 units for Harwich, then it gets what's called certified. Also referred to sometimes as the Safe Harbor, where the town can deny, without the developer's ability to appeal, deny what it considers inappropriate comprehensive permit applications that don't address local housing needs. With Chapter 40B being the, the development permitting process that can override local zoning if a project meets certain criteria.
So Karen, can I ask you, can we ask you questions at this, during the process, or should we wait to the end?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I've got a question for you. Okay, so I've got a question for you. Housing production goals being 33 units per year for Harwich, right? That's the, what we're currently looking at. And the idea of attaining that, getting the certification. I mean, Harwich only has something like 6,000 households, right? And so the idea is that if you can turn off the 40B spigot, it sounds like we'll never get to that. I mean, it sounds like we're getting on a treadmill that we can't ever get off of if that's what the objective is, to turn off the 40B.
Well, you know, first of all, let me just go backtrack and say, if you create, produce 33 units in a year, you get a one-year Safe Harbor. If you produce 2%, 1% or 66 units, you get a two-year Safe Harbor. The goal of the plan is not just to get certified and have that period. It's also to really have a roadmap for the town to be proactive on the housing front over the next few years. So it goes back to the purpose. First of all, have a better understanding what's going on, get updated information, make some, you know, judicious decisions about priorities in the community with respect to housing, come up with strategies that make sense based on local priorities and resources, and then to actually implement strategies. If the strategies actually can get to a point of creating 33 units, that's great. The town would need about 300 units to reach the 10% affordability goal. Most towns that do that are usually doing it through multifamily rental housing because all units as part of a rental housing development under 40B count towards the subsidized housing inventory, even though perhaps like 75% might be market units. So there is an incentive for towns to actually do some multifamily rental development in appropriate locations.
Right.
So is the town probably going to reach certification and get to that 10% in the next five years? Unlikely. But I think it's a matter of striving towards and doing a good faith effort to address the needs of the community primarily. So next slide is on what is affordable housing. And we're basically had, and the state has also embraced this idea of kind of a reasonable and traditional threshold of affordability. If you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing costs, you are considered to have cost burdens and living in housing that is not affordable. If you're spending 50% or more of income on housing costs, you're considered severely cost burdened. And, but the definition that most people are actually talking about when they talk about affordable housing, and I interject the capital A in affordable housing, units that count towards that state 10% affordability threshold, towards that half percent of year-round housing stock on the annual housing productions, those units have to meet a number of requirements in order to count. And they have to be subsidized either directly through some public source or approved through a subsidizing agency such as a Chapter 40B development. In order for the developer to be able to move forward to the ZVA for permitting, has to get the go-ahead from a subsidizing agency in the state to do that. And there's a whole process for doing that. The units also have to be deed restricted, and we're talking more and more about in perpetuity. It takes a lot of effort to, and resources to create affordable units. And so the idea is to keep them as part of the town's inventory for as long a period as possible. And they have to be affirmatively marketed. So folks outside the community also have a chance to learn about the opportunity and to apply. Although, for many, not most, for affordable housing developments, developments include affordable units, up to 70% of the units can be reserved for those who live or work in the community or have children who attend local schools. And they have to be available to households earning at or below 80% of area median income. An area for Harwich would be Barnstable County. Just to give you a sample, these income limits are updated annually. They're adjusted by household size. But just where we are in 2023, a three-person household, the income limit would be $82,850. Next slide. So what housing is affordable in Harwich? And we're talking once again about this kind of capital A affordable units that meet all the required pieces of the Chapter 40B. So of the 6,581 year-round housing units, 328 or almost 5% are included in this subsidized housing inventory. And just to give you, you know, one of the real impacts of COVID, and you're probably aware of this, but it's interesting to have the documentation. So 2010, there were 6,121 year-round units. In 2020, that went up to 6,581 year-round units. And then back down in 2021, based on census estimates, went back down to 5,733 units. But the decennial census figures count as the denominator when figuring out the percentage of affordable units toward, in the SHI, that subsidized housing inventory. So the 6,581 units will stand for the next 10 years until the 2030 census figures are released. And of the, of the 328 units, part of the subsidized housing inventory, just to give you some information about it, 80% of them are rentals. 53%, more than half, were permitted through Chapter 40B. 20 SHI units are owned and managed by the Harwich Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority also manages 21 Massachusetts Rental Voucher Program, rental vouchers, although those units cannot be included on the SHI because they're not permanent units. They're mobile vouchers. Although some housing vouchers can be project-based, and then they can count. Next slide. So just briefly, demographic trends. So between 2010 and 2021, about 1,100 new residents came into the community to a total of 13,329. That represented about a 7%, 6% growth period between 2010 and 2021. And you see on the chart on the right that growth was pretty steady. When it got to 2,000, it dipped a little bit, not much, dipped a little bit. And then it went up to 13,440 people in 2020. This is part of the decennial count. And it's just down a little bit based on the 2021 census estimates to 13,329. The projections, population projections indicate that the population will stay about that level through 2030 and then begin to decline. Small but growing racial diversity. In 2004, 6% of residents considered themselves to be non-white. And that increased, increased a bit to 5.1% in 2021. Increasing modestly, increasing numbers of small, non-family households. A decrease in families of about 1% and a gain of non-families of about 1%. Losing younger residents and gaining older ones, which has been a trend for a while. Put the next slide on. So this slide shows the change in the age distribution. The columns on the right, the orange ones being the 2,000 census, then the 2010 census, and then the 2021 census estimates. And you see that the column, the group of columns on the left are those regarding children under age 18, which decreased by 27%, although the town-wide population during that period increased by 7.6%. Some increased notably in the 18 to 34 range, increased about 12%, which is a good signal that that population is, is increasing. Kind of entry-level workers and residents starting to raise their own families. And then it went, goes down in 35 to 44 range, the 45 to 54 range. And then, not surprising, the older income ranges, there's an increase, 55 to 64-year-olds at 90%, 65 to 74-year-olds at 63%. And some decrease in the population 75 years and over. Overall, those 65 years and older increased between 2000 and 2021 by 27%. And they're projected to be, to increase to 42% in the next decade or so.
Can I ask you a question about that slide?
Yeah.
Have you drilled down on these numbers?
What do you mean?
Well, it seems to me that the under 18 should track almost identically to the 25 to, what is it, 54?
25 to 54? I don't understand. No, there's 18, 30, 35 to 44.
18, then 35 to 44. Okay, I can't see it real well. It would seem that they would track almost identically to, probably the second two groups would overlap. But if the, below 18 are children, minors, then the people who have children are in those two age brackets. And it seems like they don't track identically, especially in 2021. So I'm just wondering, is there anything that would account for that?
Well, there is a decrease. The 35 to 44 age cohort and the 45 to 54 age cohort, we have those children, that there's a decline in those residents. And there's a ton of information on this age information in the Housing Needs Assessment numbers, you know, and percentages by all these years and analysis, further analysis of these. But yeah, you have those who are actually, have children under age 18, also decreasing.
By the way, I would just add one little footnote, a historical note, that the demographic trend, that secular trend that you're talking about of losing youthful population on the Cape goes back to November of 1620. People have been leaving pretty regularly since the Mayflower skipped town and across to Plymouth.
That's true.
Okay, next slide. So the 2021 census estimates have a median household income of $79,641. And just for comparison's sake, the county's median is much higher, at $91,438. And Harwich's median is below that 80% of area median income limit that I gave you before for a three-person household of $82,850. More households, 57% of households earn more than $100,000. And that was 22% in that category in 2010. Declines in households earning less than $25,000 to 12% of 906, or 690 households in 2021. There's still, given that there are 328 SHI units, there's still enough housing to accommodate this very low income group. And just to give you a sense, in 2010, that figure was 12, was 21%. So it has decreased substantially. The State Department of Labor and Workforce Development included an average weekly wage for Harwich of $1,116, assuming they're working full-time all year round. That translates into an income of about $58,000. One conclusion is that many of folks who actually have jobs in Harwich can't afford to live in Harwich, given that this is far below even the median household income, much less those who can afford the housing prices. 13.5% of residents claimed a disability. And to give you another point of comparison, it was higher for the county at 15.4%, but still higher than the state level of 11.7%. As the population continues to age, one would expect that the level of disabilities will go up somewhat. And this all points to the need for, you know, greater handicap accessibility and supportive services being integrated into any kind of housing. You know, the chart on the right basically shows the distribution of incomes between 2010 and 2021. All the age, all the ranges below $75,000, so reductions. And then you see the huge spike in the numbers of folks who had incomes of over $150,000 on the far right. Next slide. So finally, the housing. So Harwich, Harwich's housing is aging. 61% of the stock predates 1980. It's likely they have, some of the units to have the, have lead paint hazards, which are a problem for young children. Also, some deferred system and structural needs. And for those who have septic systems can have some problems with, in that area as well. There has been limited housing production since 2010. And another, another issue with respect to housing growth has been the substantial tear-down activity that's occurred, which has been kind of ranging between a third to half of all new development. There has been a loss of year-round rental units since 2010, which is concerning. Where there are 1,110 such units in 2010, and down to 826 by 2021. And this is about almost 300 units of year-round rental housing lost, likely converted to seasonal use or second homes or owner occupancy. Owner occupancy rate at 86% in 2021. That's gone up, was 80% in 2010. 89% of units are in single-family detached dwellings. Only 4% in multifamily properties of five-plus units. Has limited diversity of housing types in the community. Low vacancy rates of less than 1% for homeownership and 8% for rentals. It's kind of surprised to see the 8%, given that what we've learned from the pandemic has been basically kind of a economics 101 situation where the folks looking for a safer retreat from COVID came into the community and really had that demand, drained local supply, imbalance in supply and demand, drove up prices. And the constant drug meat has been high prices, low inventory of available units, which with rising interest rates is really, and construction costs has been a problem for communities. really, and construction costs has been a problem for communities everywhere. And so this chart on the right, basically, the top numbers are the total number of units, and then the columns to the right, the lower numbers are seasonal or occasional units, and you see kind of a fairly constant increase in seasonal units. For example, nineteen-eighty, thirty-seven point four percent of all units were seasonal or occasional, by twenty-ten, it was forty point five percent, twenty-twenty, it was thirty-seven point four percent during the pandemic, and then it subsequently has gone back up to forty-one point seven percent. Okay, next slide. Housing cost trends. Housing market has rebounded, and once again, kind of the imbalance between some, supply and demand. While the median income increased by ninety-two percent between two thousand and twenty-twenty-one, the median single-family home price increased by one hundred and ninety-five percent, increasing affordability gaps. The median single-family house price was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as of August twenty-twenty-three, and that required an income of about a hundred and sixty thousand two hundred dollars. It was based on a number of assumptions, including a six-point-five percent interest rate, thirty-year term, that thirty percent of the income was actually spent on housing and financing, eighty percent financing. The, the median single-family house price I just checked earlier, and as the end of twenty-twenty-three, did go up a bit to six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So based on eighty percent financing, the affordability gap was an estimated three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars for the median income-earning household, and that's the difference between the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars median sales price and what a median income-earning household can afford, or an estimated three hundred and thirty-one thousand, some odd change. You know, obviously with the increase in, twenty thousand dollar increase in the median single-family host price, house price, the gap goes up to over three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that's for a median income-earning household, for someone, it, it changes based on the income that you would use, and also whether you apply ninety-five percent financing, actually goes up when the case of ninety-five percent financing. Market rents are about twenty-four hundred dollars for a two-bedroom unit, and that would require an income of about a hundred and six thousand dollars, which is significantly, I mean, it's twice the median income for a renter household at fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. And that calculation of income is based, again, on thirty percent of income being spent for housing, and I also threw in an average monthly utility bill of two hundred and fifty dollars. About one-third of households had cost burdens, as they were spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs, and fourteen percent of all households had what's described, defined as severe cost burdens, as they were spending more than half their income on housing costs. And you looked at just the households earning at or below eighty percent of area median income, sixty-three percent had cost burdens, and thirty-two percent had severe cost burdens. I mean, it's clearly people, some people are really struggling to stay in the community. And this next slide shows in a comparison of the distribution of sales for single-family homes, comparing the period of October twenty-fifteen to September twenty-sixteen, which is kind of the upper, upper line to begin with, and also the sales activity between October twenty-twenty-two and September twenty-twenty-three. And what's notable is that the sales price, the, the sequence sales price has moved from the lower range of two hundred to six hun, two hundred to really four hundred thousand dollars, to the range of four hundred to seven hundred. I mean, the, the curve at sixty, the highest curve on the more recent sales year was sixty-three units in the six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar range compared to a hundred and sixty-six units seven years ago in the two hundred to three hundred and ninety-nine range. So you see not only the shift towards higher sales prices, but also the shift downwards to fewer sales, largely related to the impacts of COVID, limited sales activity, as well as, you know, some current homeowners who might be interested in selling are hanging on to their units because they're locked into those lower interest rates, and the higher interest rates are also diswading some would-be purchasers as well.
Was anything going on in, in twenty-fifteen to account for the spike at, what, a hundred and six, is that a hundred and six home sales?
Well, under, no, it went from thirteen units under two hundred thousand dollars to a hundred and sixty-six, no, prices were lower then.
It's just the number of units sold, I'm just wondering if there were like, change in tax laws or anything that would account for that, that's, of all of those numbers there, that's the only real anomaly.
Well, that, that was like the sweet spot. What I think is really, what I think is un, kind of hidden in the, the graphic here is at the upper end of the scale, you've got almost four hundred percent increase in sales at the upper end, million plus, you've got a five hundred percent increase at the eight-hundred K, right?
That's right.
And you got a three hundred percent increase at six hundred K, so, you know, one sixty-six kind of distorts, the volume distorts the actual value and the growth value at that other end of the scale. To me, you know, the narrowing is like a paradox, but that's where all the action is.
But you know what? Seven years ago, the median was what, was, you know, in that three hundred thousand dollar range.
Right, right.
The median has just gone, you know, the prices have increased, you know, substantially. So that's, that's, that's kind of, you can see it, but rightly so, on the million-plus properties, the eight hundred-plus properties, you see the uptick in the luxury market.
Well, it's either an uptick in the luxury market or gradual impact of inflation on the numerical value of the real estate, you know, or both, right? So, I mean, because when I say what, like a, a, a two-bedroom ranch house on Belmont Road is now over a million dollars.
Yeah.
You know, and I would hardly call that a luxury dwelling, you know, but that's the reality, so.
Good point, good point. Okay, next slide. So, under priority housing needs, kind of, we're continuing to recommend a focus on rental housing, year-round rental housing, to focus on the most vulnerable residents, to help diversify the housing stock, to make up for some of the loss in rental units. Almost all state subsidies are for rentals, so you can leverage local, local resources much more effectively, and then also there's really long waits for subsidized housing that rarely turns over. First-time homeownership still should be part of the town's housing agenda, certainly a starter housing to attract those, a workforce and units for empty nesters. Integrate handicap accessibility and supportive services into new development, given thirteen point five percent of those who claim a disability and an aging population, and a support necessary home improvements to bring units up, up to code for health and safety purposes. And next steps, we're going to have some additional meetings with the local Comprehensive Plan Committee and the Housing Trust to share the results of this needs assessment and get their further input on the next parts of the housing plan related to goals and strategies. We're going to hold Community Housing Workshop and Visioning Sessions to get community input, and also to give them this information too. We'll then draft next sections of the Housing Production Plan related to production goals and strategies. They will conduct another forum, the community to present the draft plan for comments, and then we need approval, approvals from both the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to submit the plan to the state for approval, and it goes to now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. In the past, they were taking several months for the review process, now it's, it's shortened to less than a month, which has been a nice trend. And then, I'm gonna, just also indulge me, that it's, thought it might be useful to look at, based on Housing Production Plan requirements, towns have to address these five categories of strategies, and I'll couple relate to the Planning Board for sure. First one, identification of zoning districts or geographic areas in which the municipality proposes to modify current regulations for the purposes of creating affordable housing developments to meet its housing production goal. And then, diventification of specific sites to which the municipality will encourage the filing of comprehensive permit projects. Also, looking at, they want to see characteristics of proposed residential or mixed-use developments that would be preferred by the municipality, municipally-owned parcels, which the municipality commits to issue requests for proposals to develop affordable housing. And Harwich has had, you know, real track record and real precedent for donating town-owned properties for the purposes of affordable housing, and the Housing Trust is now looking at the Marceline property as a potential town-owned site for affordable housing development. And then participation in regional collaborations addressing housing developments, the final kind of category of strategies. And the next slide.
Before we go, just one quick note, that Marceline property was acquired for the very purposes of developing a large chunk, up to ninety units, so that would get us considerably down the, down the road, down the path toward that additional three hundred and thirty-something. The other thing is, is that the Planning Board and hopefully the Zoning Board of Appeals has been talking, the Planning Board itself has been entertaining discussions about mixed-use developments now for about three years, and that, one of the things I look forward to is getting into proper language, the kind of desirable mixed-use developments that we'd like to see, particularly in terms of how that can be combined with larger lots with historic, historic or preservation-worthy structures on it as well.
Gotcha. This is the kind of thing at, towards the end of this presentation that I was really hoping to hear from you folks, and I did include a slide that just kind of lists zoning-related strategies that we included in the last plan for your reference, and I can go through and talk a little bit about them if you want, but I, you know, think that this moving, this meeting provides an opportunity for you folks to kind of register your sense about, you know, what the priorities should be with respect to including strategies related to zoning to promote greater housing diversity, affordability, smart growth development. So, anyway.
I think, don't we already have a motel conversion by law? Because I could think of two motels that have already undergone conversions into housing units. A, the Lincoln, right across, it used to be a Witchmere, or right next to the Witchmere Tennis Courts on twenty-eight, the head of Red River, and then also, well, Stone Horse, right? So those are two conver, because I think we're on our way with that.
Great. I mean, was there, how, how, what was the zoning for that?
There is Zone Commercial, right? And they were taken over as conversion projects that were, given our enthusiastic endorsement in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-one.
Great, that's great news.
We modified the accessory apartment bylaw.
Yeah, we modified that, although, and let me, I have one other question, because this is kind of a peculiar topic, it's, might sound a little antiquated, but has there been any discussion in terms of this accessory apartment that a, kind of a shadow from the past was, a lot of properties in Harwich after World War I and prior to about nineteen-sixties, the nineteen-sixty operated basically what we would call, you know, boarding houses, that there were informal arrangements made with property owners to rent out rooms, kind of ad libitum, but there was a different kind of tenant, you know, tenant rights back then, as, but there were, I should say, you know, landlord rights, I guess, were different. So, is there any, you know, space, any air in the room for that kind of conversation? I guess not.
Well, what happened to the, were those properties basically converted to seasonal use, or?
Well, I think what happened-
They're no longer existing.
They're, they exist, in fact, that's why we have, you know, some of the older housing stock that we have. Like, consider the old Captain's Houses along twenty-eight, all the way through, like, south, south Harwich up to the Chatham Line. A lot of those survived the twentieth century because they were able, for a big chunk of that, the owners were able to rent out rooms. And in fact, when you think about the housing stock, let's say in the sixty, seventies and eighties, when we had that kind of summer flush, when we, you know, tripled our population, a lot of the high school kids that used, college kids that came here, they would rent a room in a private home.
Yes.
And so this is what I'm, you know, that's kind of, this is much more, much less formal, much less oriented in construction and production of housing, but actually, the leveraging of existing, you know, whatever, beds, not as a unit, but a bed or like a subunit. So, is that ever, you know, like, do people ever talk about that stuff, or?
There has been some discussion in other communities about, you know, allowing this type of, you know, rooms being kind of used for seasonal use particularly, but there was suggested that some language in the zoning bylaw might be needed in order to better define numbers of unrelated individuals that can live together.
Right.
To make it work.
Right.
I, I know Dennis was talking about it, I know there was, came up as an issue in Falmouth, and so I, 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 I think that it does kind of address our real need, and whether you want to include it in the HPT, even though the units would not be necessarily affordable, it still serves, you know, a local need, if there was a way of allowing those units to kind of be, you know, A-OK.
Well, my thing is like, it's kind of a fractional consideration on the margin, because here's, you know, for somebody that's been listening to this conversation for a long time now, you know, the population of the town swells enormously for about eighty, eighty days, right? And so, the town wants us to commit to one size, imagine using like a sartorial metaphor, imagine if you had to commit to having a fifty-size waist, a fifty-inch waist, because that's where you expand to during the summertime, but for the other two hundred and fifty days of the year, you're a thirty-two or a thirty-four, you know? It's just like, it's, to me, the idea that the- It's just like, it's, to me, the idea that the, there's like this uniform percentage that's desirable, to me, like, you know, Middlesex County or, you know, is a lot, has a lot different economic activity 365 days a year than Barnstable County or Dukes County, right? It's like, they're apples and oranges. And, you know, this is part of the thing that I was hoping that would get also part of a conversation, because I think this would be a perfect example for like an AI hypothetical modeling here of taking some of this historic data and saying, okay, so what is the necessary elasticity given these demographic trends? Instead of saying, okay, you have to have 10%. Well, 10% doesn't make much sense in like February or January, right? And people tie up a lot of capital and, and, you know, lose, you know, it just, to me, that drives prices up when you can't amortize your investment for 200 days of the year. You know, like, if you can amortize the cost of, in like, an affordable unit that in a, in a 24, 20, 24/7/365 area, let's say, west of Boston or, you know, in Worcester, something like that, we just don't have that, you know?
You know what, though? I do hear, you know, folks saying, hey, I know this guy. He's a new teacher to the school district. He earns $75,000. He has no place to go.
Right.
So potentially, you know, a unit in, you know, this, in such a building might work for him. Certainly, an ADU would be a good deal for somebody like that.
Right.
But there's still, on, because the cost of housing is so high, there's still a lot of people who have to go very far to find something they can afford.
Well, thank you very much. This has been very instructive. I appreciate you taking the time to share all this material with us. And I suspect we're going to be connecting back later as this moves through the paces.
And please, I mean, if there are ideas or suggestions that you have for zoning changes, please pass them along because, you know, we want to be able to incorporate a pragmatic approach that's going to have some support in the plan.
Great, thank you so much.
Do you have a copy of the slides or the presentation?
Yes, I can, I can share them with everyone.
Great. Good information in there that I might want to look, look at sometime in the future. So, thank you, thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Very educational. So, do we have any further business before the board this evening? Yes?
I just wanted to mention that our next meeting is actually February 13th.
February 13th, okay, great.
And I will be here. I wasn't going to be here on the 7th.
That's terrific. Okay.
Or the 6th.
Great, well, if we have no further business before the board, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.